네, 여러분 안녕하세요. 만나봐서 반갑습니다. 오늘 이 포럼에 아주 귀한 분을 모시고 소중한 얘기를 듣게 됐고요. 그래서 오늘 이 포럼을 진행하게 될 송승환입니다. 반갑습니다. 뭐 소개를 통해서 다 아시겠지만 오늘 저희가 모신 분은 조셉 폴리쉬 쥬리아드 음대의 총장님님이십니다. 그 자세한 설명은 저희가 책자에 나와 있어서 구체적인 설명은 드리지 않겠습니다만, 오늘 그 제목이 굉장히 의미심장하죠. 예술가만 아는 예술은 가르치지 않는다. 그래서 과연 어떤 내용의 얘기를 하실지가 굉장히 궁금하고요. 또 스피치를 한 25분 정도 하시고 준비하신 동영상 프로그램이 4개가 있다고 합니다. 그래서 스피치를 들으시고 또 동영상 프로그램을 보시면서 이번에 강의가 겉되어지는 굉장히 흥미로운 그런 포름이 될것 같습니다. 여러분 조셉 폴리쉬 총장님을 소개하겠습니다. 여러분 박수로 환영해 주십시오.
Well, I'm honored to be a participant in this Global Human Resources Forum 2010. I'm particularly pleased that I can add my voice as a musician and an arts educator. Okay. I'm particularly pleased that I can add my voice as a musician and an arts educator to the serious discourse that has taken place here in the past 24 hours, focusing on politics, the economy, education, and a sense of global citizenship and social responsibility. Since I was also educated in political science and international relations during my undergraduate and early graduate years, these discussions have been particularly interesting and stimulating for me. I'm very impressed with the forum's idealistic mission and belief that many global challenges can be overcome through the creativity and talents of our fellow human beings working together for a common good. I will contend in my talk that education in the arts may very well exist as a way to stimulate creativity and imagination in all professional pursuits. It's my belief that creativity and imagination are critical elements in the development of a new economic activity. Educational systems that essentially are based on testing success as the principal element of advancement, ignoring the concept of multiple intelligences first explored by the scholar Howard Gardner. As a result, some of our best young creative thinkers may be squeezed out of the system in favor of those who are trained to take tests, not educated to develop creative vision. It is this vision that has invented the iPad and created works of art that transcend the human experience and allow us to better understand our humanity. In my talk to you this morning, I'll make the case that the arts are a powerful vehicle for the betterment of our lives and of our world and that they should be included in any discussion that focuses on the study of the quality of life on this troubled yet magnificent planet. In the recent past, the arts have been consistently maligned by some and have even been relegated to lesser positions in educational systems on the primary and secondary levels. Of course, reservations about the role of the arts in society are not new. They're as old as culture itself. At the very dawn of this culture, of Western culture in particular, Aristotle had warned the Athenians against becoming professional musicians lest they be mere hirelings and mechanics, unquote, and not complete human beings. And to take another emblematic example, at the end of the 19th century, Leo Tolstoy powerfully excoriated the professionalization of the arts and the attendant creation of conservatory training for producing in professional artists nothing but slavish technicians bereft of feeling and humanity and therefore incapable of serving the true end of art, which for Tolstoy was the sharing of universal human emotions. But if today's neglect and misunderstanding of the arts are not new, they nonetheless warrant reflection, for they do not just concern the state of a single profession. They address important and venerable questions. Does art make life better? Does it make people better? If so, how? And if not, why not? Everyone who believes in the inherent worth of the arts should try to answer these questions in some way or another. The answers, however, will not be simple ones. They will probably be contradictory. Most people accept the commonplace assumption of liberal education that holds that art improves people and their lives by providing positive emotional, sensory, and imaginative satisfactions. And it might even expand a person's powers to develop creativity beyond the arts. This assumption long ago prompted the introduction of arts education into the general curriculum on the primary and secondary levels. The Greeks placed the arts at the heart of all education, believing that art shapes character for good and for ill. Romanticists like Wordsworth and Shelley, Goethe, and Schiller saw in aesthetic education the path to humanism. And both Tolstoy and Dostoevsky attributed redemptive powers to art. Tolstoy imagining that true art could unite humankind and Dostoevsky stating simply, in one of his more upbeat moments, that beauty could save the world. Such ideas are viewed by many as superfluous, soft, and unfocused. However, as illuminated through two great books, Samuel Huntington's Clash of Civilizations and Bernard Lewis's What Went Wrong? These are books that were just published in the past five, seven years. Cultural issues are shown to be profoundly intertwined with globalization and omnipotent power of technology and all that we address in our 21st century world. Quote, "The rivalry of the superpowers is replaced by the clash of civilizations," wrote Huntington. It is precisely at this time of continuing tension in the world, at this time when international relations between sovereign states are changing before our eyes, that nation-states should reevaluate their roles in world society and deal with the paradox that military might alone will not be sufficient to deal successfully with the problems facing the international arena today. One need look only at the current situation in Afghanistan to understand this concept. As I prepared my talk, I recalled the remarkable words of Vaclav Havel, the Czech playwright who became the president of his country in the days after the fall of communism. Speaking to a joint session of the American Congress in 1990, Havel said, "The human face of the world is changing so rapidly that none of the familiar political speedometers are adequate. We playwrights, who have to cram a whole human life or an entire historical era into a two-hour play, can scarcely understand this rapidity ourselves." The point that was so striking to me, however, was how Havel saw the presidency of the Czech Republic and his art within a moral context. He said, "The salvation of this human world lies nowhere else than in the human heart, in the human power to reflect, in human meekness, and in human responsibility. We still don't know how to put morality ahead of politics, science, and the economy. The only genuine backbone of all of our actions, if they are to be moral, is responsibility. Responsibility to something higher than my family, my country, my firm, or my success." To develop a clear policy whereby cross-cultural understanding can function as a positive force in world affairs becomes that much more complex when regimes change and technology brings information instantaneously to the world's population. Yet occasionally, the moral high ground can generate more power than an analysis of forces on the ground. Listen to these words from Senator J. William Fulbright, spoken at the end of his public career regarding the creation of the Fulbright Scholars Program. Quote, "In introducing the basic legislation in 1945 for the Educational Exchange Program, it was my thought that if large numbers of people know and understand the people from nations other than their own, they might develop a capacity for empathy, a distaste for killing other people, and an inclination to peace. If the competitive urge of men could be diverted from military to cultural pursuits, the world could be a different and better place to live." As the president of the Juilliard School, I'm very proud to count 40 countries represented in our student body this year alone. The lessons I have learned from our students and our programs reinforce my belief in a new commitment to use the power of the arts for the good of the world. Let me give you just three examples of Juilliard's cultural richness. One, a highly talented drama student brings his fellow Juilliard students in dance, drama, and music to southern Florida in the United States, where they create a two-week arts experience for local underprivileged youth. The response from children and their parents is one of awe at the transformation taking place in participants in such a short time. Two, a group of Juilliard students travels to Tanzania in Africa, East Africa, where they work with HIV-infected children and adults in arts-centered enrichment programs. And finally, about 30 Juilliard students annually go to New Orleans on their spring break to reconstruct homes ravaged by Hurricane Katrina and to teach local children. And these are only three of many, many examples. In a true and real sense, great art transcends the mundane and the mediocre. Art can be, as the writer Samuel Lipman once said, "Great values carried by beauty." In the 21st century, there are many issues confronting performing artists that really didn't exist 50 years ago. In recent years, the very arts to which artists have dedicated their lives have been put in question as positive or even important forces in our world. The assumption that the arts are essential elements of our environment as human beings has been weakened by the extraordinary power of the media, the deletion of the arts from curricula of primary and secondary school systems, and the general perception that the arts are only for a tiny segment of the population that has not been buffeted by a spiral of poverty, crime, and disease that has torn into the heart of our world. I would contend, ladies and gentlemen, that this final assumption is totally false. In fact, it may very well be the arts that can provide the stimulus and focus needed to energize our nations as we move further into the millennium. According to composer and performer Molly Sturgis, artists, quote, "have carved new roads with their tenacity. Their willingness to risk, reach, hold, experiment, nurture, and bring forth fosters essential cultural innovation and connection. By encountering them, we are emboldened to look beyond what is familiar, what is comfortable, moving towards new approaches and combinations that will define our common future." Drama director Tim Dang also has stated, "This is not to say that we should not invest in needed health and human services, housing programs, and economic stimulus packages, but we should include the arts as a necessity too. Our artists are the cultural innovators and inventors who continually push boundaries and provide fresh interpretations of our world today. The arts teach us how to think creatively, whether you're an engineer building a roller coaster, a business executive finding new ways to market a product, or a manager finding ways to efficiently supervise staff. Ingenuity has long been a driving force in any economy and the arts can provide an unlimited fuel source for what is yet to come." In Shakespeare's great comedy Twelfth Night, the character Malvolio reads a letter from his supposed beloved in which she tells him, "Be not afraid of greatness. Some are born great, some achieve greatness, and some have greatness thrust upon them." This is a time when all of us who believe in the important role of art in our society, in our world, must respond to a call to action that focuses our goals and reinforces our resolve to create an environment that truly nurtures the arts. We must assert the important part that art has in enhancing the quality of our lives and in preventing us from settling for the mediocre as individuals and as nations. It should be understood as well that this is not a problem to be solved only by the use of financial resources. The initial issue to address is one of leadership. There are very few politicians, educators, administrators, and other concerned individuals who have formulated a clear and direct agenda for the arts in our global society. Barbara Tuchman, the Pulitzer Prize-winning historian, has written that, "Incompetence is a companion of decline because decline has no goal. When people do not care and have no goal in view, they do not function at their utmost. They grow lax and accept defeat." Although Dr. Tuchman is discussing the political process, her conclusion could just as well apply to music in our culture. Quote, "To raise the level of public understanding from frivolity to a readiness to take serious things seriously will require a great and concerted national effort." The concept that the arts can enhance the quality of life of our citizenry through their positive force must be introduced to the collective global psyche. This process of understanding and appreciating the arts can only be realized through education in our primary and secondary schools, in our institutions of higher learning, and through our performing arts institutions. The task of precisely delineating the impact of the arts on the intellectual and social growth of children, for example, should probably be left to psychologists and psychiatrists. But I will tell you that from my own experiences, I have seen numerous examples of children and adults having a transformational experience when they are touched by the arts. Within primary or secondary school settings, it is commonplace for serious arts instruction to develop discipline, focus, and a sense of personal accomplishment in students. Invariably, these arts-engaged young people realize improved grades, better attendance records, and interact more effectively with their peers, as well as becoming school leaders. But it seems that we simply have little space in our lives to allow the provocative and soothing elements of art to take root in our world and to continually enrich us as people. Without the effective existence of art in our global culture, I believe we will have little hope of flourishing as civilized and caring nations in the future. Rather than being a subject of pious platitudes, the arts around the world must be viewed not only as an extraordinarily important element of our existence, but also as a fragile and highly sensitive entity that can be easily neutralized by an uncaring populace. The distinguished American historian Arthur Schlesinger Jr. once wrote, "If history tells us anything, it tells us that the United States, like all other nations, will be measured in the eyes of posterity less by the size of its gross domestic product and the menace of its military arsenal, then by its character and achievement as a civilization." Picture for a moment a society without an understanding and an appreciation for art, and you will have conjured up a truly barren and crude world. Sadly, history can present many examples of civilizations in humanity. But we need only look at this past century's world wars and the arms race that followed to see the world moving in a direction that literally threatened the very existence of our civilization. To ensure that art remains the important civilizing element that it must be in our societies requires not only artistic leadership and determination, but global-wide educational programs that enable individuals to understand the arts and see their place in their respective cultures. Business, government, and educational leaders have rarely, if ever, committed themselves to the premise that art enriches our environment and each of us is individuals. Far from being an abstract and naive argument, this concept, if realized, can greatly help our world to understand the beauty of our existence and the necessity to enhance the quality of the human experience. I would like to end my talk by presenting four brief video excerpts of artistic works that reflect a few of the myriad human emotions and values that are part of our world. My point in showing these videos is to simply demonstrate that profound human values and beliefs can be easily observed in exceptional works of art. We begin with the final scene of Igor Stravinsky's magnificent ballet, The Rite of Spring, the dans sacral, the sacrificial dance. Premiered in 1913, as you probably know, it created a riot in Paris. Here, in this last depiction, we see the sacrificed one going through a whole host of series of fear and death, one of the most profound and powerful of human emotions. This video that you'll see is a reconstruction of the original choreography that was done by Vaslav Nijinsky in 1913. So it's slightly primitive, but nevertheless, that's the whole idea of The Rite of Spring. This is presented by the Mariinsky Orchestra and Ballet with Valery Gergiev conducting. So the dans sacral, the finale of The Rite of Spring. The second excerpt is from one of Shakespeare's great plays, The Merchant of Venice. This is Act Three, Scene One, the very famous monologue of Shylock, in which he talks about the fact that all human beings, of whatever religion, of whatever ethnic group, have common attributes that we all share. In addition, he talks about revenge, another element of the human condition. Revenge in this case, so he could get back at the people who actually persuaded his daughter to flee him in his lifestyle. Shylock in this case is played by Henry Goodman. This is a production of 2001 directed by Trevor Nun. We could lower the lights again because we're going to see more video. So please lower the lights.
I will not take his flesh. What's that good for?
To bait fish with oil. If it will feed nothing else, it will feed my revenge. He hath disgraced me and hindered me half a million. Laughed at my losses, mocked at my gains, scorned my nation, thwarted my bargains, cooled my friends, hated my enemies. And what's his reason? I am a Jew. Has not it Jew eyes? Has not it Jew hands, organs, dimensions, senses, affections, passions? Fed with the same food, hurt with the same weapons, subjected to the same diseases, healed by the same means, warmed and cooled by the same winter and summer as a Christian is? If you prey on us, do we not bleed? If you tickle us, do we not laugh? If you poison us, do we not die? And if you wrong us, shall we not revenge? If we are like you and all the rest, we shall resemble you in that. If a Jew wrong a Christian, what is his humility? Revenge! If a Christian wrong a Jew, what should his sufferance be by Christian example? Why? Revenge. The villainy you teach me, I will execute, and it shall go hard. But I will better the instructions.
The third excerpt is from one of the great operas of Wolfgang Amadeus Mozart, The Marriage of Figaro. In this last scene, as you probably know, Count Alma Viva throughout the opera is chasing after women and certainly isn't ready to be unfaithful to his wife, the countess. And in this final scene, he's tricked into misunderstanding who he's trying to seduce, actually. And it turns out that it's his wife in disguise. And the extraordinary part of this final scene is how Mozart, through music and words, and the words of De Ponti, the great, Lorenzo De Ponti, the great librettist of Mozart, is to show human forgiveness, the ability to understand that there is always a future and that one should try to view the possibilities of forgiveness and move on. So in looking at this last scene from The Merchant of Venice, where Shylock is so driven by revenge and hate and upset, now let's look at the other side of the coin, this revelation of forgiveness in this final scene, which is a 1994 production of the English Baroque soloists conducted by John Elliott Gardner. Another forgiveness theme. It's too bad we can't keep going on. For the sake of time, we're going to move forward. I mean, it's absolutely sublime what Mozart has done after about three, three-and-a-half-hour opera with all sorts of things happening to come to this final understanding of the human condition and the ability to forgive. Incredibly touching. Finally, I thought we'd end on a joyous note, and I can't think of anything more joyous, in my opinion, than the beginning of Mahler's great Eighth Symphony, Symphony of a Thousand, as it's sometimes called because of the use of various choruses in a large orchestra. Here, we see just absolute joy and exaltation based on a ninth-century hymn, Venae Creator Spiritus, Come Creator Spirit, that is often played at coronations and sung at coronations and special, special religious gatherings. And Mahler just uses the entire force of all these choruses and orchestra to, to wring out in joy. And as I said, I can't imagine a more human exaltation than this experience. This is a performance conducted by Leonard Bernstein with Vienna Philharmonic in a 1975 Salzburg Festival performance, The Eighth Symphony of Mahler, first part. Well, I suggest if you have jet lag or you're sleepy, just put that on your iPod and this will wake you up. Well, I've spoken about all of the challenges that, that are involved in the arts in our society. And yes, those problems are inherent in the field of arts and education around the globe, and they're large and diverse. Those include a lack of community, understanding and support, perhaps political hostility or even in certain cases outright disdain for the arts, the serious weakening of the foundation that supports music education programs, and the continuing financial problems facing these endeavors. But we should remember the words of the American author Mark Twain, who said of the music of Wagner, that it's not as bad as it sounds. There is reason for genuine optimism in resolving these issues. I continue to be amazed and enriched by the talent, discipline, and sheer energy of today's young people from all around the world. With proper support from their elders, there will be no limits to the positive deeds that they can accomplish. That proper support must come from leaders in the fields of education, public policy, business, and the arts through intelligent, creative, and continuing advocacy, a type of advocacy that surfaces not only at the time of a perceived crisis, but that presents a unified message to our political leaders on a continuing basis. Thank you very much.
예술 교육에서의 창의력과 상상력의 중요성은 요즘 우리나라에서도 많이 얘기하고 있고요. 사실 우리나라 초등학교 중등고등학교 과정에서 예술 과목이 계속 축소되고 있는 그런 문제점들이 요즘 많이 대두되고 있는데 미국에서도 그런 모양이죠. 그래서 굉장히 좀 놀라웠고 역시 또 재정적인 지원 축소도 우리 예술계가 지금 많이 겪고 있는 문제입니다. 그런 문제에 관해서도 언급을 해주셨고 특히 우리 인간의 희생과 복수와 자비 와 기쁨의 네 가지 키워드를 비디오 클립으로 아주 짤막하게 보여주신 게 굉장히 인상적이었습니다. 오늘 어렵게 모신 조스폴리 총장님을 모시고 여러분들 궁금한 게 있으시면 질문을 하고 그 질문에 총장님이 답변하시는 그런 시간을 갖도록 하겠습니다. 우리 통역하시는 분들을 좀 도와주기 위해서 질문은 좀 간결하게 천천히 얘기해 주시면 좋겠어요. 너무 빠르게 질문하시면 뜻이 달 전달이 안될것 같아서요. 질문 있으신 분 손을 들어주시면 제가 마이크를 전달하도록 하겠습니다. 네, 여기 앞에 계신 분 마이크 좀 전달해 주시죠.
Once again, thank you for the amazing speech you made tonight. I mean, not tonight, this morning. Hi, um, first of all, my name is Jayup. I'm a college student, ready to, want to study medicine. The points that you showed, that shared with us this morning was truly came to me as a very, came to me as a very appropriate, very needy, which is something very needed at this moment in Korea, and I'm sure that it rippled all the hearts in this, in this room. My question is that I do also believe and agree that art is something more significant. It's not something for a very few people. Art is something very dynamic. It could, has a big, significant influence in politics, economy, and it is dynamic enough to change people, change things. My question about your lecture is that what would be your practical solution for art in, in giving good influence in this, in this society and this world? For instance, my, I believe that the problem in this world is being, is that this world is being more individualistic and that not many people care about other peoples these days. And what you showed, showed us examples that I think art has a very good potential in, in promoting the sense of community and caring about others that, and I would like to ask you, what would be your practical solutions for art? How art can contribute in making people more caring about others, like practical solutions or ideas? Thank you.
Well, right, right off the bat, I would say that, as I mentioned in my talk, education is, is the key through which the arts can have a positive impact on our, on our planet. And just to give you, you know, some examples, in the 1950s and 1960s, when I was growing up in New York City, arts instruction was in every middle school, every junior high school. And students from all over the city took up musical instruments, whether they were rich or poor, it was just based on their talent. And many of them did not become professional musicians, or some did, but they became doctors and lawyers. And it was an incredibly rich environment that, that involved literally hundreds of thousands of students. I, I believe deeply, as I said in my talk, that the arts stimulate creativity and imagination. They, they may also stimulate empathy. Now, we can all come up with examples of composers, for example, or musicians, performers, who are not the nicest people. Let's take Richard Wagner or even Beethoven. They were generally not nice guys, but, but they were musical geniuses. So I'm not claiming that everybody who embraces art is going to be the most empathetic and, and selfless individual. But I am saying that through primary and school education, where, secondary education, where you can integrate arts instruction into the curriculum on a daily basis and get students involved in, in working with other students, in focusing on their, on their studies, there is great joy and discipline that comes from the whole process. And as I said, it, it then melts over into their grades, their attendance, their perception of others, and their interaction. You know, I mentioned this, one of the programs in Florida that our students were involved in, it was only two weeks in the summer, but some parents came to visit me. They actually came all the way from Florida. It's about three hours away by plane for New York. And they came to thank me and to thank Juilliard and to thank students. And one parent told me that her ten-year-old, they had moved into the community, she felt alienated from her friends, she didn't have any place to go, and she went to this arts program, and it brought out all of the good qualities that, that were in her and allowed her to blossom. And now she's very much involved in chorus and theater at her, at her middle school or elementary school. So it, it happens, it does, it's not going to happen 100% of the time, but it, it is important that we, that we respect the importance of the arts in our society. Yesterday, panel discussion, if I, just final comment, one of my colleagues was speaking, is a professor from Stanford Business School, and he was saying how our culture, our society is driven so heavily by economic terms, that we, we no longer talk in human terms, we talk in terms of recessions and, and productivity and et cetera, et cetera. And that's absolutely true. And I think the arts are certainly undervalued and, and perceived occasionally as being soft or, or not intellectually rigid or rigorous, I should say. And, and the arts are rigorous, believe me. Anybody who's gone through it, who's here, knows what it is to be an artist.
자 다시 한번요. 다른 분들을 중에 좀 통역을 원하시는 분도 있으니까 마이크를 통해서 질문해 주시겠어요? 그래야 통역이 가능하니까.
My apologies. Mike, I'm sorry for not detailed, detailing down my questions. My question was about on a more broader sense. What came to me as a surprise today was that I had a very bad stereotype that Julia, the president, would only be interested in music, but I realized was that what you have dealt was very profound and very deep and very broad. So my question is that how art can contribute in those broad and political issues like the classic issues?
Well, of course, you know, at first, first blush, you, you know, I'm not going to contend that by introducing Mozart to the Taliban, we're, we're going to have a, an epiphany on their part. On the other hand, and this is very much the case, if you listen to the commanding general of, of the forces there, General Petraeus, his claim is we are not going to succeed in, in trying to find some level of peace through military exercises. He, he is, he literally said that we have to persuade them to believe in, in certain cultural values and in sharing and in, and in a better world by approaching things in a different way. I mean, some, some people, as I said, I have a background in international relations as well. Some, some people refer to this as soft power. In other words, military power is hard power, soft power, which might be perceived as negative or pejorative, is, is really persuading Taliban leaders that it's to their benefit to embrace certain cultural norms. Now, and you could take the opposite, other side, that the Taliban were notorious for their destruction of art. You, you may remember that when they were in power in Afghanistan, they, they drilled their, their artillery on these magnificent rock formations that were sculpted for many years, from Buddhas and things like that, and they were totally destroyed because they represented symbolic figures that were anathema to the Taliban's point of view. But that's another case. So I, I think there are more opportunities for soft power. I think the misunderstanding of the United States, for example, around the world, clearly there are all sorts of valid issues about whether the United States' policy is correct or incorrect in, in Afghanistan or Iraq or Iran, et cetera. But I think that the United States has not done a good job of showing our other side, our soft side, the artistic growth and the artistic commitment to many of our institutions and people. So those are the broader things, I think, that, that you addressed, that I think we could do better.
감사합니다. 또 다음 질문.
플러스, 플러스퍼 아웃 와이트 했어. 아티스트는 패턴과 경험을 강조하고, 그리고 우리의 아스테틱 즐거움은 패턴을 인정하는 것과 같아. 그리고 또 다른, very, very, 플러스, 플러스퍼 아웃 옷, I remember, I don't remember his name, said that art is just an imitation of nature. And I would like to know, what is, what is your personal definition of art, if there is any?
That's a, that's a tough question, and actually, I teach a course at Juilliard for graduate students called American Society and the Arts. And the first thing we do is to try to define art, and we, we always fail. It's, it's, because I think if you, I think it was, it was Duke Ellington, the great jazz artist, who said about jazz, if, if you have to explain what it is, you'll never understand it. But on the other hand, I think that in, in many ways, art is associated, at least in the Romantic period, with beauty, and that is very different in the 20th century, where you, you may not, you may hear certain works that may not be considered beautiful to the ear. I'm not suggesting that a work of Milton Babbitt or Elliot Carter or Arnold Schoenberg is not beautiful, but it may not be as accessible as, as, let's say Mozart. And yet, there's, there's extraordinary depth and profound craft and texture to what, to what the art of these composers is, even though it may not be related to beauty. But most of the time, art and beauty are related, as Samuel Lippman said, it's, art is great values carried by beauty. And maybe if I were to extrapolate and try to answer your question, I would say that it, that, that art is great values carried by the human spirit. That would, that would be my, my take on it. You're welcome.
오늘 제가 좌장의 자리에 앉아서 두 가지 점에서 놀라고 있습니다. 저희가 뭐 연극이나 음악회나 무용발표회를 하면은 티켓이 너무 안 팔려서 우리가 늘 고민하는데 이렇게 예술에 관심이 많은 가진 분들이 많다는데 왜 편은 안 팔릴까? 굉장히 놀랍습니다. 다른 세션에 비해서 오늘 굉장히 많은 분들이 오셨거든요. 두 번째는 또 대한민국에 이렇게 영어를 잘하시는 분이 많은가 또 놀라고 있는데 한국어로 질문하셔도 다 통역이 되니까 주눅 들지 마시고 앞에 분들이 영어로 질문하셔서 한국어로 질문해 주셔도 좋겠습니다. 네, 저 뒤에 남자분.
예, 저는 영어로 질문을 못 해서 한국말로 질문을 드리겠습니다.
천천히 해주세요.
예. 지금 이제 목동에서 수학 학원을 하고 있습니다. 근데 지금 아이들한테 아까 말씀하셨던 대로 뭐 한국이든 미국이든 전 세계적으로 지금 뭐
천천히 해주세요.
예. 지금 이제 목동에서 수학 학원을 하고 있습니다. 근데 지금 아이들한테 아까 말씀하셨던 대로 뭐 한국이든 미국이든 전 세계적으로 지금 뭐 초등 중등 아이들한테 예술을 접하지 못하는 게 저도 마찬가지지만 예술이 뭔지를 잘 모르기 때문에 그런 건 아닌지라고 생각이 좀 들고요. 그 다음 우리 총장님처럼 이렇게 전문 분야의 이제 박식한 부신들이 보다 쉽게 사람들한테 조금 예술이 뭔가를 조금 쉽게 접근할 수 있는 그런 기회를 만들어 주셨으면 좋겠고. 제가 요즘에 이제 예술에 대해서 나름대로 느낀 것은 무엇이냐면 각자 개인의 그 행동이나 생각이나 이런 것들을 뭐 미술을 하는 사람은 그림으로 표현을 하고 조각을 하는 사람은 이제 조각으로 표현하고 이런 게 아닌가 좀 생각이 돼요. 그리고 요즘에 이제 제가 예술을 잘 모르다가 요즘에 이제 하나씩 하나씩 배워가는데 지금 저기 글로벌 HR 포럼 앞에도 보면 저 작품이 혹시 키스 엘링 작품이 아닌가 이런 생각이 좀 듭니다. 그래서 이번에도 이제 소마 미술관에서 한번 하면서 제가 본거 같다라는 생각이 들면서 이렇게 그 조금씩 이제 기분이 좋아지고 제가 이렇게 예술에 관심을 가졌던 건 이제 그 경제적인 부는 어느 정도 많이 창출이 된것 같습니다. 근데 사람들이 점점 행복해지는 지수는 떨어지는데 과연 그것을 무엇으로 메꿀까 를 생각해 보았더니 아마 그런 예술이 아닌가 이런 생각을 갖고 있고요. 그래서 좀 전에 제가 이제 총장님한테 질문드리고 싶은 거는 제가 지금 느끼고 있는 예술이라는 거는 각자의 분야에서 자기가 생각한 것을 말이 아니라 어떠한 뭐 무용을 하시는 분은 무용 행동으로 표현하고 화가들은 그림으로 표현하는 것이 아닌가 이런 걸 한번 여쭙고 싶고요. 아까 뭐 플로리다에서 이렇게 고맙다고 오신 거는 제가 이제 나름 교육을 하는 사람으로서 보면 예술이라는 것을 하려면 자기 스스로 동기부여가 돼서 몰입을 할수 있지 않나? 그래서 몰입과 집중이라는 걸 그런 쪽에서 배워서 그것을 예술을 잘하면 다른 분야에서도 적용되는 게 아닌가 이런 생각이 들고 제 말에 대해서 좀 어느 정도 평가를 해주셨으면 감사하겠습니다.
조금 핵심 질문을 한번 마지막으로 다시 하나 던져주시겠어요?
예, 제가 지금 느끼는 것은 예술이라는 것이 음악을 하는 사람, 미술을 하는 사람, 뭐 조각을 하는 사람들이 자기의 생각을 어떠한 형태로 음악을 하는 사람은 소리로, 그림을 하는 사람은 그림으로 표현을 하고 뭐 무용이나 이런 발레를 하는 사람들은 그런 행동으로서 어떤 걸 표현하는 게 아닌가라는 생각이 드는데 그거에 대해서 어떻게 생각하시는지 좀 알고 싶습니다.
Sure, it can be a good definition of art if that's what you want it to be. I mean, I'm not doctrinaire about that. I think earlier on in what you were saying, you mentioned how arts can be integrated into our society, and that's where I keep going back to education and valuing arts. I know that whether it's the United States or in Korea, there is an increasing emphasis on testing of children, evaluation to go from one grade to another grade, and also to get into universities or colleges or some selective high schools. And that troubles me tremendously. First of all, what happens is that since the system lends itself to having to pass tests, tutorials start happening. A great deal of time and money is put into tutoring the children, the young adults, to pass the next test. And one creates a testing culture as opposed to a creative imaginative culture. When teachers are forced to teach to the test, they tend to get away from the essence of some of the most extraordinary things that one would find in literature or history or mathematics or sciences. They're in some ways forced to teach to the test because they're evaluated as well as the creation of their students or their successes. And I think that's very sad. And in New York, I've seen that. And as a result, since so much time has to go into preparing for the test, there's no time for the arts. And I think that's a tremendous loss. You know, people who are creative and imaginative will be the life changers in our society in the future. It's not going to be the successful test takers necessarily.
또 질문이 갑자기 많아졌네요. 앞에 계신 분.
Thank you, Dr. Paulish, for your speech and interesting video. My name is Moon Hee, working in HR in Diageo, the liquor company.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
My name is Moon Hee, working in HR in Diageo, you know, the English liquor company. And you know, these days, many companies encourage people to learn and feel from the arts. They go to the museums together and theaters together. But when we go back to work, it is hard to apply the feeling or emotions we learned from the art because we have our own systems and processes and regulations at the work. So I wonder whether can you share the best practices or tips to apply the learning from the art to the business? So that's my question. Thank you.
Well, there are all sorts of fun ways of integrating arts activities into the business world, into the office world, for example. I mean, it could be extremely simple. We did one very amusing thing that worked quite well. One of our trustees wanted to enliven his office and bring some art to the office. So he engaged a brass quintet from the Juilliard School, and they played close to the elevator, and the sound just permeated the entire office. And it made people smile, and it made people, you know, become involved and stop their work and have a sense of, you know, a bit of playfulness and specialness during a day. There are other things that are a little bit more intricate. For example, we have taken, we have asked business people to watch a string quartet rehearse, and to, a serious string quartet, a very advanced string quartet. And we've seen that the business people see the interchange of ideas. Because traditionally, in a string quartet, all four players have equal say in what artistically should happen. And it's quite instructive for supervisors, business supervisors, to see how interaction takes place that's effective and that causes change. The same with orchestral players, although in that setting, you have one head, the conductor, who pretty much calls the shots on everything that's going on. And that's certainly very interesting and effective for any CEO who wants to be entirely in charge of something. But there are all sorts of innovative and fun ways, from just providing music in an atrium of a building, to a lobby, to a floor of a building, and then more, if you can partner with one of the wonderful music schools here in Seoul or around the country, and ask some of those ensembles to come and talk about their music. It really enlivens the whole environment, gets people interested. Maybe they'll buy some tickets, too.
네, 고맙습니다. 네, 저 뒤에 손 높이드신 분.
Hi, my name is Jung Gil Lee. I'm a high school student in Korea. I go to Chongshim International Academy. And my question today is, there are cases, as an arts educator yourself, I raise this question to you. There are cases there at students, rather maybe young adults, who do have passion for arts but are not as talented as others, although students in your school must be talented very much. But there are students who are not as talented. In that case, for the educators, arts educators, is it the role of them to encourage them and promote them to pursue their passion? Or is it also your role to let them realize where they are and rather enjoy art as their hobby rather than their future job or their pursuit of life?
No, that's a good question. Sure, it's our job to advise people that they probably shouldn't have a life as professional musicians. But when I speak to parents who are interested in coming to Juilliard, I always say to them, if your child, the only thing that your child wants to do is to be an actor or a dancer or a musician, if that's the focus that your child has and it's white-hot within him or her, Juilliard is a great place to be. And we would love to have your child, assuming they get into the school through the audition. On the other hand, if your child is not quite sure whether this is the direction to take, then Juilliard is not the place to come because it's a very, very focused environment. And within that regard, going back to music instruction at primary and secondary levels, when I talk about that, it's not with the intent that we develop more professional musicians. We have more professional musicians than we actually can absorb in the United States already. I don't know if that's the case here in Korea, but what I'm talking about is a love of the arts, a joy that comes through performance, that comes from discipline and focus, that you really need in order to seriously study the arts. And although you may become a lawyer or a doctor or an architect or an accountant, you will always have that discipline and focus within you. And that's so valuable. It's so valuable. I see it over and over again. You know, some of our graduates decide that they, even after going through Juilliard, that they want to change tracks, and they become attorneys or business people, or in this one case I'm going to tell you about, a physician. And he's now a surgeon in one of our New York hospitals. And I met him recently, and he said the most interesting thing to me. He said, you know, I went through Juilliard, and then I went through medical school. And I know you're not going to believe this, but it was much more difficult at Juilliard than it was at medical school. And all of the discipline and learning and study and practice that I learned at Juilliard, I applied to medical school. Maybe that's why it was easier for me. And, you know, we tend to underrate that. Personal discipline is such an important element. Of course, joy, too. If you can link personal discipline with joy, then you've got the best thing. I'm not in favor of forcing children to practice until their arms, you know, fall off. It's not joyful and it's not effective.
네, 자뭐 질문이 너무 많으셔서. 네, 여기 한번 기회 드릴까요? 안경 쓰신 여자분.
First of all, thank you very much for your very moving presentation. And I have a question from a more social aspect of art education. Because in Korea, and I'm pretty sure in the US as well, art education was always associated with money, wealth, class, and privilege. And I sincerely believe that everybody benefits from art education. But how do we reach down to the more socially disadvantaged population who do not have more exposure to art as, let's say, the middle-class students or, and provide art education to them?
Well, once again, a wonderful question, and I'm very happy to answer it. As it turns out, in the United States, students who pursue the arts seriously tend not to come from families that have significant financial resources. They tend not to come from families with significant resources. And so that's why we have such a major scholarship program. We give away over $10 million of scholarship. And by the way, anybody who's accepted to Juilliard through the audition process and can show us that they have financial need through various application forms that are verified, if they have very high merit and very high need, they will receive a full scholarship. If they have very high merit and they have no need, they don't receive anything. But about 85% of our students receive some sort of scholarship. So that shows that, you know, the need is there. In answer to your question, though, about how you find people who might be very talented but who don't have access to teaching, that's a program that we call in the United States, although it's a term that's changing, outreach programs. Over 50% of our students actually go out and perform in schools, hospitals, nursing homes. There's a whole host of programs we have where we identify children who ordinarily wouldn't be identified as having musical talent. I believe deeply that every population in the world has musical talent in it. But the sad thing is that often the talent is not identified for various social reasons, political reasons or probably more financial reasons. So we have found, we started a program called the Music Advancement Program that's been going on for over 20 years now. And this is for disadvantaged children in the New York City school system. And we identify them and accept them not based on their great ability on an instrument because they're very young, they may be eight or nine years old. But if they're playing even for six months, what we're looking for is pitch acuity, the ability to discern pitch differences, focus, dedication. But the most difficult issue is we need family support. Because we know that without family support, the children, you know, won't get the lessons, they won't get to practice. And that's very, we found that to be very, very difficult, that many of the children don't have what you would see in a traditional family. And I know in Korea, where the family is such a strong entity of society, that's such a major plus. Because children who are supported by families through their love, first of all, will really grow. And that's been one of my major goals, to get Juilliard out into the world, actually, and to find new ways of programming arts education in other countries. And we've been doing it in a few countries in Latin America, for example. I think that's the mission. I wrote a book in 2005 called The Artist is Citizen, and that's about that. It's about the responsibility of artists to do more than just getting the concerts right. And that's a different point of view, I think, than some artists have. Thank you.
네, 앞에 이 분.
아, 저는.
네, 말씀하시면 돼요.
저는 한국말로 질문을 하겠습니다. 저는 성신여자대학교 경영학과에 재학 중인 이 지영이라고 합니다. 제가 대학에 들어가서 처음으로 어떤 예술 영화나 공연이나 미술 작품을 접해 보았었는데 지금은 그게 취미로 자리를 잡았지만 처음에는 굉장히 낯설고 어려웠습니다. 그래서 예술을 우리 삶 속에 자리 잡기 위해서 어릴 적부터의 교육이 되게 중요하다는 걸 그때 느꼈는데요. 현재 아시다시피 한국의 초중고등학교에서는 음악이나 미술 과목이 어떤 예술로서 즐기는 것이나 받아들여지는 게 아니라 단지 점수를 받기 위해 해야 하는 굉장히 성가신 것으로 여겨지는 게 많은 것이 사실입니다. 그런데 이런 현재 한국의 교육 체제 하에서 예술을 예술로서 가르치고 받아들기 위해선 아이들의 의식 변화가 선행되어야 된다고 생각을 하는데요. 여기서 좀 포괄적인 대답보다는 구체적으로 어떤 아이들의 의식 변화를 위해서 학교에서 제공할 수 있는 것은 어떤 게 있을지 어떻게 생각하시는지 한번 구체적인 답변을 들어보고 싶습니다.
Well, I think the way that you do it in schools for young children is to put serious arts instruction into the curriculum on a daily basis, taught by trained arts instructors. I mean, one of the problems has been in New York City that sometimes the arts are taught by teachers who are not practicing artists or have nothing to do with art. They just, you know, have a two-hour workshop, and then all of a sudden have to start talking about the orchestra, for example. And I think, I guess you come from the same university as Professor Song, and about programs that you said you felt slightly awkward going to. I think one of the great things that has been happening more and more now is that artists are talking about their art and explaining to audiences their own personal feelings about how they perform art. And that has been very instructive for audiences. I think audiences... and about programs that you said you felt slightly awkward going to. I think one of the great things that has been happening more and more now is that artists are talking about their art and explaining to audiences their own personal feelings about how they perform art. And that has been very instructive for audiences. I think audiences immediately have a greater appreciation of the work that they're listening to. So that's something I would suggest that could happen, especially in a university setting where for every concert, there's presentations beforehand or even before each piece. And it's been successful around the world, but you just need to have people explain it clearly and effectively. And that takes a certain skill set as well. But I think goes back to curriculum-based education in the primary and secondary fields is what we need in order to get going forward. But I do also think, you know, if you talk about instrumental instruction, if you study clarinet when you're in fifth grade or third, you know, when you're 10 years old, 12 years old, whether you become, let's assume you're not going to become a professional clarinetist, when you go to a concert, you're going to relate to the clarinet section. You're going to know what the demands of that piece is. You're going to appreciate the fact that that clarinetist is really quite a virtuoso. And if you never experienced it, you wouldn't know the difference. So that's, once again, about education, I think, skill-based instruction.
네, 감사합니다. 시간이 많이 남아있지 않아서 한두 분 질문만 받고 끝내야 될것 같은데 좀 뒤쪽 분들한테 기회 드릴게요. 제가 너무 앞에 분들한테만 기회 드린 거예요. 맨저 뒤에 나이가 좀 드신 소장님 계신데.
겉으로는 나이가 많이 들어보이는데 속으로는 그렇게 나이 들어지는 않다고 생각합니다. 행정가로서 제가 총장님께 질문을 드리겠습니다. 그 예술가로서만 키우는 게 아니라 자기보다 못한 사람들을 위한 배려로서 제가 기억하기론 탄자니아의 HIVS 환자들을 돌보는 곳으로 학생들을 보낸다고 하셨는데 부모님들 입장에서는 상당히 걱정을 하고 학생들도 가기 힘들어할 텐데 어떻게 그거를 설득하시고 시행하셔서 사고가 없었는지 그거에 대한 대답을 듣고 싶습니다.
Well, the people who went, the students who went to Tanzania were young people in their early twenties, so they're young adults. The thing that I think is most important about that program and the others that I mentioned and many others that I didn't mention is that it was totally generated by the students. This was their idea. And what we did was to help them along in developing a business plan, so to speak, as to how they would get there, how they would pay for it, what their programs would be. And we helped a little bit with funding, but not entirely. They also went out and raised their own money. And that was another great thing. I believe that artists today must be much more entrepreneurial. They really must be able to present their art in different ways. Obviously, we were always concerned about safety. But in fact, the research we had done about Tanzania was that it was a safe environment and everything worked out fine. There are cases where we're not quite sure if it's a safe environment and then we do have to say to them, we don't think it's too good an idea. But I think I'll share something about the federal law in the United States that perhaps is different from what exists in Korea. Juilliard or any other educational institution is prohibited, is not allowed, from communicating directly with the parents. We have to communicate to the students, and we have to hope that the students will then communicate to the parents. And only in cases of extreme emergency do we actually have to go directly to the parents. So their grades, their disciplinary issues, if there are any, are not communicated to the parents directly. So that's a bit different.
시간이 뭐 거의 다 됐네요. 그래서 마지막 질문 한 분만 네 받도록 하겠습니다. 마지막 질문으로 좀 부탁드립니다.
Okay, thank you for your valuable thought in your presentation. My name is Jin Sung Kim from Hana Academy Seoul, which is newly established. I'm going to tell you my experience at my school. Actually, you mentioned about the love of parents in Korea, which devotes a lot of things for their kids. But my observation is that the love of parents ruined our art education in Korea. What I'm saying is that they emphasize so much about the tests. So they not allow their kids to learn something. In my school, our kids learn two skills. Every week, they have to take more than one and a half hours of physical education and some music and art education. And students like that, but parents do not. So please, everyone in this room, agree with the importance of art education. Someday, you'll have your kids, right? So please, keep your mind, okay? We have to change our mindset, our way of thinking. Art education is important, then please allow your kids to learn something in that way. Thank you.
네, 감사합니다. 오늘 뭐 길지 않은 시간이었지만 그러나 굉장히 핵심적으로 좋은 얘기를 제가 조셉 폴리시 총장님으로부터 들었고 또 다양한 질문들을 던져주셔서 대단히 고맙습니다. 저희 정말 예술 교육이 좀 위기라는 얘기를 많이 합니다. 제가 교육기관에다는 어느 회의에 참석했는데 초등학교 중학교 미술 음악 시간을 더 줄여... 줄일 계획이라는 그런 얘기를 듣고 굉장히 깜짝이 놀랐던 적이 있었는데 이런 포름을 기회로 우리 초등학교 중등학교의 예술 교육이 좀더 확대될 수 있는 그런 방안이 마련되고 또 예술 쪽에 좀 재정 지원이 좀 많이 좀 됐으면 좋겠어요. 그 연극 속담에 이런 얘기가 있습니다. 은행가들이 모이면 예술을 얘기하고 예술가들이 모이면 돈 얘기를 한다. 돈 많은 부자들은 여유가 있어서 뭐 좋은 그림 음악 얘기를 합니다. 가난한 예술가들은 모이면 너 집세 냈냐? 요번 달뭐 먹고 사냐? 돈 얘기를 더 많이 하게 되죠. 우리나라의 순수 예술가들에게도 재정 지원이 점점 줄어들고 있는 추세입니다. 사회 복지 예산 쪽으로 예산이 많이 가면서 문화예술은 줄어들고 있죠. 그런 문화예술의 확대와 문화예술의 교육의 확대가 되는 그런 일의 보탬이 되는 오늘 포름이 됐기를 바라면서 끝으로 오늘 긴 시간 동안 응해주신 우리 조셉 폴리시 총장님께 여러분 큰 박수로 환영해 주십시오. 고맙습니다.